Hello, my name is Sue Smirak and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Washington R County. Welcome to our online candidate forum for the November 8th general election. The League is a nonpartisan nonprofit organization that promotes voter education and participation. And we host candidate forums to help voters make informed choices. Now, let's hear from the candidates.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jeff Smirak and I will moderate the forum tonight. Now it's my honor to introduce four of the thirteen nonpartisan candidates for the Ann Arbor School Board. Jeremie Lapham, Reema Mohammed, Barry Schumer, and Alex Wood. The League will conduct a total of three forums in which twelve of the thirteen candidates for the Ann Arbor School Board have agreed to participate. Thank you, candidates, for participating in this forum. We're ready now for your opening statement, Mr. Lapham.
Great, thanks for having me here. I really appreciate the opportunity. You know, students are the leaders of tomorrow and their success is essential to our collective future. And while there's been a lot of work done on behalf of students, families, teachers, educators, and communities across Michigan, there's still a lot to be done. And I'm up for the challenge. You know, as a board member, I'll bring my experience as a single parent, a union leader, and twenty-plus-year community member, and a school-based nurse practitioner to serve as a nexus between teachers, workers, students, families, policymakers, and the administration. That's really all I have to say right now. I have a major focus on health equity, education, and community-based participatory action. And I'm hoping to bring my experiences as the vice president of a large institution, the University of Michigan Professional Nurses Council, where I regularly interact with the public, our members, patients, and work with collective bargaining groups to the board. I think I have the experience required for the position and the knowledge to get us through the next couple of years as we grow our school district and work on spending the large bond that we have to spend. So I look forward to your vote and welcome. Any questions, you can send them to me. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you for your time today, and that's all. My time's up.
Thank you, Mr. Lapham. And now Ms. Mohammed, may we have your opening statement, ma'am?
Yes, thank you for inviting me for this very important panel. Just to tell you a little about me, I am a first-generation refugee Palestinian-American who moved to the US at a young age, really hoping for that American dream. My family really struggled through tough financial, emotional, social struggles, including racism and periods of poverty. And if it wasn't for the public schools, especially the teachers, I would not be where I am today. So this is really one of the biggest reasons why I want to give back to the public schools. I am a current faculty member at University of Michigan, an educator-clinician, researcher for the past sixteen years. I have four children. My oldest goes to Tappan Middle School. I'm a Muslim and a multi-ethnic family. And really, my strongest passion is really fostering community involvement through open communication, transparency, inclusiveness. So that's my biggest goal for the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mohammed. And now we're ready for your opening statement, Mr. Schumer.
Very good. My name is Barry Schumer, and I'm running for the Ann Arbor School Board because I want to give back to this great community. I love the city of Ann Arbor. I worked for twenty-three years in the public schools as a clinical social worker, so have significant experience working with students, parents, and teachers. I love my work helping children with behavioral and emotional problems. And I'm very aware of working with special education students, children with educational disabilities. The ultimate responsibility to schools is to create adults who are literate in reading, math, and sciences, who can critically think, enabling them to be part of our great American civilization. My focus will be heavily in the area of mental health, especially what happened with children after the COVID crisis. I am very concerned that as a society, we are confusing our children in many different ways. And unfortunately, the public schools are part of that confusing message, I feel. So I look forward to this debate tonight and look forward to the possibility of working with other trustees January 1st.
Thank you, Mr. Schumer. And now Ms. Wood, may we have your opening statement, please?
Hi, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Alex Wood. I use she/her pronouns just for the folks watching at home. If you need a visual description, I am a light-skinned Hispanic woman with long dark hair and wearing a black shirt. I am a little bit about myself. I am a queer Puerto Rican Jewish mom of three. I am a former Ann Arbor Public School student myself. I went to school here. My kids go to school here now, so I'm a current public school parent. And my experience on both sides of that in our district means that I'm kind of uniquely positioned to see the ways that we're actually falling short on our commitments to equity and inclusion of marginalized families. That's a big part of why I am running. I think those values are really, they're important to me because that's a part of my life, my life experience. I want to make sure that other families like mine feel that they belong here. And I'm concerned with some of the choices that we've making lately that leave those families behind. And I'm looking forward to the opportunity to working towards changing that so that everyone feels like they belong here.
Thank you very much, Ms. Woods. And thank you, all candidates. And now we're ready to go to the questions. We will start with Ms. Mohammed for the first question. What are your top two priorities if elected?
So, thank you for, that's a very important question, especially, you know, my biggest passion is surrounding diversity, equity, inclusion, and anti-racism, as well as fostering community input. Those are my biggest top priorities. And for me, especially, I feel like those are the challenges that are being faced with our public schools, our current schools now. When it comes to community engagement, I do want to foster community input at all levels. So not necessarily just administrators, teachers, and that's, we should include students, we should include families, we should include community partners. And I think that creates a very inclusive environment, so that's very, very crucial. And then, of course, for diversity, equity, inclusion, and anti-racism, I have a lot of experience in that. And especially, it's something I'm very passionate about because I have faced that growing up and even more recently. So I really want to analyze the needs when it comes to that and implement sustainable interventions to ensure these needs are addressed. And, you know, again, there, especially during the pandemic, a lot of these issues, especially inequities, have come to light. But this has been happening for a long, long time. So it's very important, especially when it comes to addressing inequities, that we have to have people in leadership that have, you know, have that diverse perspective. Also, we need to put people in leadership to address DEIA work with actionable goals and then have the power to make change, and it's not just all talk. And then, of course, we have to engage the community to address these issues. And it has to be all members of the community. So those are my two top priorities to address if elected. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mohammed. Mr. Schumer, same question to you, sir.
There we go. I'll have this down by the end of the debate of the forum. Anyway, my top two priorities are, number one, being very concerned about proficiency rates in math and reading. A district like Ann Arbor that's considered one of the top districts in the state of Michigan, to have a non-proficiency reading rate near thirty percent and a math non-proficiency rate near fifty percent is quite shocking. You can imagine what those rates are in other school districts in the state if Ann Arbor is at that level. So clearly, that to me is the first priority I look at. The second priority I have is clearly in the area of mental health. I know we have a clinical social worker on the board currently as a trustee. I would continue to look at that work of that trustee. What's happened with COVID in the last two and a half years has been devastating to students and children in this country. In my psychotherapy practice, I see children who have been so affected, it's really hard to imagine. I had a nine-year-old come to me about six months ago, was so frightened and terrified of getting COVID and dying, he could not function. Now, we were able to make some pretty good progress, had very loving, supportive parents, so that ended up being a positive story. I work with young adults from the University of Michigan and other universities that their lives completely changed after COVID. It started with social isolation, depression. What we really have to look at is what's happened in the mental health area, that our suicide rate has gone up significantly the last two and a half years for teens and young adults. And the drug overdose rate has also gone up significantly. So aside from students learning, losing academic time, and regressing possibly with their education, these are very serious mental health issues. And the schools cannot solve all of them, but I think we need to make sure that each building is completely prepared to identify, reach out for high-risk kids that might be in crisis and do everything. Obviously, the social workers and psychologists do that right now. It's just, it has increased quite a bit in the last two years.
Thank you, Mr. Schumer. Now, Ms. Wood, Ms. Wood, same question to you, ma'am.
My two major priorities that I'd like to work on immediately are reinstigating any semblance of a COVID safety plan and retooling the budget in a way that would allow us to bring back free lunch for everyone. When we talk about the way test scores have dropped over the last couple of years, two things that are proven to improve test scores across the board are ensuring that our students are fed and improving the air quality. So a COVID safety plan will not only keep our students healthy, ensuring that they are in class to learn, but, for example, having a HEPA filter in every room will improve the air quality. There have been studies in other schools that shows that this, like several percentage points improves test scores. It's also been known for quite some time, the way that students can't learn if they're hungry. I don't understand how we could let the funding for free lunch just fall by the wayside, especially in a district where we talk about our commitment to equity. I'd like to see us in practice show our commitment to equity by ensuring that everyone has access to food every day in our classrooms and also ensuring that everyone stays safe and healthy. As we all know, the Black community, the Hispanic community, the disabled community, the queer community are all disproportionately continue to be affected negatively by COVID. And just taking a few small steps to prevent transmission in our schools will ensure that kids can be there to learn, teachers can be there to teach them. And I really think that that's the best way to move forward is by protecting them instead of just pretending that nothing is wrong.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. And Mr. Lapham, same question to you, sir.
Sure, thank you. So first and foremost, the reduction of education to learning is problematic on a lot of levels, and I'd like to discuss that hopefully at some point during this. But my first and foremost goal is about equity and access. This is essential towards addressing inequality in our communities and to close opportunity gaps. We ought to implement a comprehensive DEI strategy with quantitative measures of equity. I'd want to engage with parents, educators, business community, students, and everyone with a stake in public education so we could collectively determine what needs to be done, including looking at strategies from Launch Michigan, the National Center for Educational Excellence and the Economy, Detroit Disability Power, and the Center for Disability Justice. Second, that would also include doing things like reinstituting before and after care programs in all of our primary school locations. Second, you know, I'm a family nurse practitioner. I work in the public schools with students on a daily basis. So the socio-emotional health of students is really important. One of the best things that happened to some of the students that I worked with was the subsidies from the CARE Act. Students, when they had the basic needs met, were better able to function in class, they had better outcomes, they felt better about themselves. You know, because we know that a student's ability to learn is determined by all these factors outside of the classroom, like hunger, homelessness, poverty, exposure to violence, mental illness, and unsafe environmental conditions. So I'd want to identify and implement research-based modalities for improving socio-emotional needs and physical needs of students, improve services such as like more social workers in the schools, and helps children struggling with mental health illnesses and disorders like anxiety, depression, ADHD, PTSD. But also, I want to ensure that teachers, students, and administrators and paraprofessionals are educated on things like neurodiversity perspectives for autistic students and ensuring that non-ABA approaches are also provided at our schools. That's all I have to say so far. And of course, with all these things, I would use a community-based participatory model. So engaging the community and experts, we have plenty in our community. I would want to engage them as much as possible and determine how we steer this ship. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lapham. Mr. Schumer, you get the first of the next question. What should the Ann Arbor Public Schools do to address the student learning loss that occurred during COVID?
Well, you know, this loss in education would happen the past two and a half years. Clearly, it's going to take a while to get students caught back up. It's unrealistic to think the teachers are going to bring all students back to where they should be in this next school year. I mean, this could take certainly several years, and we're going to have to be patient with this process. Teachers have a lot, a lot to do, obviously. What's happened here, what they've gone through the last year. I'm very concerned about teachers and the pressures they're going to be under this year because of some of these educational losses and kids being behind. I think we have to be very careful to not put undue pressure on our teachers this year. I think we need to support them more than ever. We need to make sure that our top professional teachers are feeling good about their careers and feeling good about this coming year. So again, there's, to me, there's no easy answers. I liked what the other candidate said also about mental health, that, you know, when kids have their needs met, whether it be physically and emotionally, they obviously function better in school. So I like the idea of increasing the number of social workers in the district because this is going to take a very large team effort to help kids get caught up academically. And it's going to take a major team effort to really make sure we are very aware of the mental health needs of our students this next year.
Thank you, Mr. Schumer.
You're welcome.
Ms. Wood, same question to you.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Yes. What should the Ann Arbor Public Schools do to address the student learning loss that occurred during COVID?
There was that big New York Times article last week maybe about learning loss during the pandemic. And what was really interesting to me was that nobody looked at the losses outside of learning that may have contributed to that. They didn't look at whether or not those children lost parents. As we know, something around 200,000 children in the United States alone were orphaned because of COVID. And losing a parent or an immediate family member is a very significant, they're called adverse childhood experiences. And that affects learning, that affects everything else that happens. And so I'd like us to take a step back and look at all of the ways that that was contributed to over the last two years and figure out how to support students as whole people beyond just focusing on the learning piece. Because you can't, you can't separate that out, you know what I mean? Like if children are coming to school hungry, they can't learn, it doesn't matter how amazing of a teacher there is. If children have lost a parent at home, they're not going to be able to concentrate in class. I'd like to see us look into the ways the pandemic affected our families and build out supports from there. If that means adding counselors to school, adding social workers, I'd like to see, again, to bring back school lunches. We have to come at this from a more holistic approach if we want positive outcomes for our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. And Mr. Lapham, same question to you, sir.
Sure. You know, we need to support teachers' ability to teach. More appropriately, we need to support teachers' ability to educate. This would involve more critical engagement and having a multifaceted approach to educating. So teaching is not just about understaffing, it's understanding and communicating content. There's many more things to it, like managing classrooms, being a mentor, being able to deal with family and social problems that students may bring into the room. This is a really multifaceted skill set than merely being able to understand and adequately regulate a specific curriculum or set of ideas. And this is an essential step that we need to shift towards. You know, much of the educational theory over the past decade has been premised on this notion of producing test results, which leads towards uncritical students, who have not really examined their own beliefs, ideals, values. And it's really created a system in which we create, we have students who are not interested in learning for its own sake. And even much of my own experience in schools, particularly at the early education stages, it was focused on do this, don't do that. And it wasn't really about engaging me with new experiences or discovering new perceptual things. So what I would say is that we really need to focus on allowing educators to educate, you know, recognizing that learning is different than education and not an end goal in itself. It's a process. Education is a process, and we need to recognize that at a board level. And unless we do that, we're never going to shift the things that need to be shifted in terms of the question that you asked about like the test scores. I think focusing on test scores is proper, given the current conditions and how school is funded, but it's really the wrong approach. I think we can't have just one, but we have to have both. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lapham. And Ms. Mohammed, same question to you, ma'am.
Yeah, I definitely think this is a very important question, and it's one of my priorities. It is to really analyze and address opportunity gaps and learning loss in education to ensure that there is consistency throughout the district. We really need to evaluate student learning, learning laws, teacher resources, and development. So it's not just about students and test scores, student resources and support, again, looking at other factors. And then we really have to think about other factors such as inequities, especially in people of color. You know, there's also refugees and other underserved and underrepresented populations. I did want to make a note about these assessments. It is very hard, especially when we're looking at standardized tests. We know that it has been unfair to certain groups of individuals, especially people of color and of low-income groups. So we really have to think outside the box and not really think about standardized tests, but be innovative and leaders in assessing these opportunity gaps and achievement gaps. So really focusing on assessment that's integrated as part of the school curriculum and then making these assessments more relatable. So again, we would have more data-rich information that we can actually create sustainable and appropriate interventions to help with addressing learning loss. And I believe as, I'm a researcher, clinician, and educator, I really have strong critical thinking and analytic skills, and I can really help assess these opportunity gaps in education and really the factors associated with these gaps. So again, based on that data and having that data, not just focused on standardized tests, I really believe we can provide, you know, sustainable and meaningful interventions to help support the teachers and help support families as well as the children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mohammed. Ms. Wood, you get the first of the next question. School teachers have been on the front lines during the COVID pandemic, and news media report that teachers are overwhelmed and depressed. What specific, specific steps should the Ann Arbor Public Schools take to support its teachers?
I think teacher pay should be commensurate with the job they're actually doing, right? Like, I don't know a single teacher who only works their contract hours. I don't know a single teacher who has everything they need to turn these bare four walls into a beautiful classroom with just what's provided by the schools. I think if I'd been placed on the front lines of an impossible health crisis with very little support and I wasn't being paid fairly, I would be depressed too. Like, that seems like a very reasonable reaction to the realities of what we put teachers through the last couple of years and what we'd been putting them through in the years prior to that. I think we need to take a long, hard look at our teachers' pay and also the respect that they're given, that it be brought into alignment with the actual work that they're doing because it currently isn't. And I can't imagine feeling surprised that people are frustrated that they work tirelessly in one of the most important jobs a person can have, helping us, you know, bring our children into adulthood, to be treated disrespectfully, to not be paid enough, to not be supported, to be left in the middle of a current health crisis with no preventions, nothing, no safety plan, nothing to keep them healthy at work. They've told us what they need pretty clearly, and we've just been ignoring them. So we could just do what they're asking and pay them appropriately.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Mr. Lapham, same question to you, sir.
Sure. You know, the 2021 Educator Survey by the MOY Agency, sponsored by Launch Michigan, interviewed 16,000 educators in Michigan, and they list lack of support from policymakers and politicians as number one, excessive workload as number two, a lack of respect for the profession as number three, then better salaries and benefits following up. So what I think is that we need to understand that workers have the best knowledge of what's needed to be successful in their roles. You know, I advocate for nurses in my role as the vice president of a large nurses' union. Our concerns and struggles are very much the same as those of teachers. You know, and in the case of teachers, I know that teachers know how to best advocate for their students. And as a board member, I bring my experience as a parent, a union leader, twenty-plus-year community member in Ann Arbor, a school-based nurse practitioner in our own public school system, and be a nexus between teachers, workers, students, families, and the administration. And it would pursue a couple of strategies. I'd look at evidence-based strategies around teacher training, licensure, attraction, and retention, ensuring that teachers are adequately resourced and supported. I would work on recruiting diverse and talented educators to our district and to the profession with incentives to stay. This would also include perhaps looking at recruiting from HBCUs and getting people to come to this community to ensure more diversity for our students. Ensure that partnerships with local teacher education programs have strong foundations in content pedagogy and action research. I'd work with educators to support career progression model that would support and reward sharing of experience and experiences. So that would be like reward teachers for training new teachers. And then I would support access for leadership development for principals and administrators to learn how to lead schools and systems more effectively. I think that it's clear what teachers want. They've been saying it for years. We just need to listen to them and have people on the board that will do just that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lapham. Ms. Mohammed, same question to you, ma'am.
Yeah, this is a very important question. And as a healthcare worker especially that has, both my husband and I have been both my, my husband and I have been up dealing with COVID and long COVID uh, type of patients. So we know the burnout is real among healthcare workers, but definitely among the teachers. So my plan is to initially assess and address really the burnout that has been happening to teacher and staff and really think about like, what are the, you know, the reasons behind it, um, and what can we do about it? Um, but you know, some, some concrete, you know, ideas is to request more support um, for teachers and staff, and that includes, um, one component is of course increased salaries. Um, but very importantly, that more manageable schedules and workload that is crucial. Um, increase in resources, more professional development. Sometimes teachers don't feel, you know, comfortable with addressing certain things. So how can we help them to feel comfortable and feel that they're able to teach effectively and address, uh, situations? Um, and then really we want to hear the teachers. So we have to give them dedicated time for other activities such as committee involvement, such as being part of the decision-making because you have to hear on the people on the ground to make these decisions and, and you can't just have administrators making decisions if they're not even involved in these decision-making, um, discussions. And then I do plan to work on, um, I, I would love to have some kind of mentorship program, program among newer and seasoned, um, educators or teachers to help address workload schedules, managing the classroom and then have a peer non-administrator um, to provide constructive feedback for further professional growth. And I think that's crucial to provide that safe space for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mohammed. Uh, Mr. Schumer.
You know, I believe, I'm pretty sure the Ann Arbor Schools have an employee assistance program for teachers and staff. I used to work in the employee assistance field. It's a short-term counseling referral program that many corporations and school districts apply. So that, that is a real positive that this, the board and the district, I believe, has already taken. I think the other things to really be aware of for teachers, especially this year, do not give them any more responsibilities. Do not add anything more to their already heavy kind of, uh, workload. Also, I would like to give them more freedom to perform their art form. I, I don't like teachers' hands being tied by certain policies, rules. I mean, obviously there are many that, that must be adhered to, but I think we tie the hands of our teachers too often. And I think that sometimes they get frustrated because they cannot really perform their, the, the art form that I believe teaching is. I mean, if you look at what Randy Weingarten said, head of the, uh, the teachers using AFT, she said, why is there a shortage of teachers in this country? Why are students not going into schools of education? We need to figure that out. We need to make sure that young people are going into teaching that see it as an exciting, important career to help children and students and advance our country. So, so that is a very important one. And the last thing I'll say is that I think we should offer teacher, teachers' support groups, uh, which would be confidential. And I'll, I'll say this right now, whether I win the board seat or not, I would be willing to lead some of those groups.
Thank you, Mr. Schumer.
You're welcome.
And now we go to our next question and Mr. Lappam, you're the first for this question. The Board of Education's 2021 Student Enrollment Report indicates that the number of students in Ann Arbor Public Schools has declined in each of the last three years. In the past two years, the most significant single reason for the decrease was transfer private schools, per the report. Does this pattern indicate a need for changes in the Ann Arbor Public Schools?
Sure, um, I'd need to know more about the information. I believe you said about two, over the past two years, we've had a decline. And I think that's reflective of some of the challenges related to parents needing to do what they needed to do during the pandemic. Um, of course, we've always had charter schools where you get, um, people attracting them, but like, I don't think that's actually what's going on here. I think we have high-quality schools. We have high-quality teachers. But you know, a lot of people shifted out of this community. We're based, uh, largely on tech and education. People left, um, they left town. They went to various places all over the world. Um, a lot of parents couldn't work in the current, uh, public school setting due to the unfortunate, um, cutting of before and after care programs. For a lot of parents who are working in healthcare, uh, and other like essential services, they didn't have an option. So they may have needed to look at other schools that were offer, offering in-person education, uh, offering before and after care programs. So I'd really want to look and dive deeper into the reasons why those parents left. And I think that we have the wherewithal and capabilities to do that. Um, and, and I'm reticent to say that it reflects a problem necessarily with our district or the, the quality of the teachers or the quality of the education or the quality of communication. Cause I think these are, uh, are all good. Um, they were just not what people needed to meet their needs during the pandemic. And I think the schools at the time did the best they could, but maybe could have done a better job in meeting the needs of those parents and students in those particular set of circumstances that led them to leave. And I'm hopeful, and I think from what I've heard, people are starting to come back into the district now that people are coming out of COVID and coming back into in-person work and the schools are opened up again.
Thank you, Mr. Lappam. Ms. Mohammed, same question to you, ma'am.
Yeah. So I think, um, again, without the, without that detail of information and kind of the reasons for that, um, it is hard to really assess reasons, especially in times of crisis such as the COVID, you know, the COVID pandemic. Um, there could have been a lot of needs. And I know, I mean, we faced it where it's like we're two healthcare professionals, before and after school care was canceled. You know, what are we going to do? Everything is online. So in time of crisis, some of the, you know, you can't, you can't really say that that is really the, I don't know how to say it. That is really the baseline. Like that is really what would happen, not in time of crisis. So I probably want to assess, um, kind of the reasons. I'm assuming some of these reasons are more, more related to the pandemic. Um, but there could be other reasons too, but I think we really have to assess that data um, and see, you know, ask the parents that have left, ask the, you know, the current families, what are the struggles? Are there other things that, you know, draw them to the private schools or was it really more related to the pandemic and the needs of, of families? Um, so I don't necessarily think it's, I don't, it is not really related to the education. Um, I think it's not really fair to say that without having, you know, especially in times of crisis. So I think more information, um, you know, hearing again, parents are coming back, kids are coming back. I think we can assess maybe the next two years and then see if that truly is a, a pattern. You can't really, you know, assess data based on one point of time, um, even if it was two years, it's still not, there is something that, that, um, you know, made that happen. So.
Thank you, Ms. Mohammed. And Mr. Schumer, same question to you, sir.
Well, you know, my, my guess would be that this is happening all over the country. Uh, so I don't think it's really special to Ann Arbor Schools. I think it's a pretty simple explanation. I think we have a lot of frustrated parents who don't feel like they're being heard by school boards and they're very concerned about some of the their, their points of education for their children. And obviously parents are taxpayers. So we're going to have to be much more open, I think, just in general in schools, not just the Ann Arbor Schools to, to helping parents feel more included, more included in some of the, uh, concerns they have for the education of their kids. I mean, not only are, uh, more kids going to private schools, but clearly the statistics are saying that more parents are now homeschooling their children. Uh, the homeschooling number, I believe, has gone up 10 to 15% in the United States the last two years. So again, I, I don't think it really reflects anything specifically about the Ann Arbor Schools. We have a great school district with great teachers and, uh, an amazing community. And I, I, I think this will improve over the next few years, but I, to me, I see it more of a, a national problem and a national issue. Uh, but like with anything else in the country, there's going to be competition. There's going to be competition and, uh, uh, public education is, is an area that would include that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Schumer. Ms. Woods, same question to you.
Um, you know, I agree with everyone else. I don't think, especially in the last couple of years, I, I don't think that these were necessarily educational choices. Like I don't think the families that left left because Ann Arbor Public Schools wasn't meeting their educational needs, right? Like our academics have always been very strong. Um, just anecdotally, I personally know quite a few families that left in the last couple of years. Um, and for the vast majority of them, it was that first year when schools closed and they had their kids home for BIPOC families, for queer families, for disabled families, the difference in their children's mental health, being away from a source of stress and discrimination was dramatic enough that they moved heaven and earth to figure out a way to homeschool instead. Um, I don't think that that's a choice any family takes lightly. It is a huge undertaking. Um, there's a lot of considerations there and, and I don't think people are choosing that because our academics aren't strong enough. I think they're choosing that because they didn't feel like Ann Arbor Public Schools is keeping their children safe, um, physically or mentally. Um, at least in my personal experience of the families I know that left over the last couple of years.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. And everyone, this will be the last question and we'll start this last question off with Ms. Mohammed. Currently, masking for COVID is optional and welcomed across the district. What is your position on masking at the Ann Arbor Public Schools?
So I am a hundred percent supportive of masking. I think it is the, one of the single best ways to prevent, um, infection. Um, you know, I'm required to mask in the hospital setting when I see patients and, you know, it, it's definitely very effective. Um, I think that I was actually surprised, um, when they made it mask optional with no strong language, especially in high community levels. Um, you know, I would have, I, I would have felt more comfortable if it was actually required um, in that situation, um, especially knowing that it does, you know, especially in little kids. I mean, it's going to spread. Um, so I am a hundred percent supporter. Um, I'm also big supportive about making decisions, especially the pandemic has not really ended. It's still here. Um, so I feel like some of the decisions are made not from, I mean, it's, I feel like there needs to be more of a, either a health task force or get, you know, it has to have opinions from experts, not just based on the guidelines, but also experts in the community, families, teachers, students, voices, their concerns to make these decisions. And I felt like most of the decisions, um, especially the recent one was more based on, um, just follow exact wording from the CDC. Um, so I was, I was actually surprised that it wasn't required, um, when we first started school.
Thank you, Ms. Mohammed. Mr. Schumer, same question to you, sir.
I'm going to take my time, but I have a very short answer with this. I support masking being optional. I am opposed to max masking being required. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Lappam, same question to you, sir.
Sure. I, I think that the fact that we even have to ask this question is emblematic of the larger attacks on public education and public institutions in this country. Uh, masks are an effective public health measure to reduce risk. I support masking um, in public places during periods of active high transmission of respiratory illness. And the public health nurse in me would love to see a world where people voluntarily mask when they have colds and flu-like symptoms. We're not there yet. But that can be a culture that can be built. There's a lot of people that can't wear them. Um, but this is what they do in many East Asian countries and it's been shown to significantly reduce flu-related morbidity and mortality. This is something that other cultures and places around the world and in our own country do to take care of one another. And you know, as for public schools, I think we have a duty to protect the most vulnerable among us. So I would support the public health expert's recommendation for continued masking indoors. Uh, you know, I do believe in people's personal liberties and things like that. If, if they have a valid reason for not wanting to mask or being unable to mask, uh, I would want to work on ways to support them. Getting the same public education and same quality of education that they, 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 they deserve. And that, that's what I have to say about that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lappam. And now Ms. Wood, same question to you.
Can you, can you repeat the question?
Yes, yes. Currently, currently masking for COVID is optional and welcomed across the district. What is your position on masking at the Ann Arbor Public Schools?
I, so I'm legally required to send my children to school and I think the schools have an equal obligation to keep my children safe in attendance. Um, I personally would like to see them bring back universal masking and have it be tied to community transmission so that we can keep our kids safe. Masks are a proven way to stop transmission. Schools are a source of community transmission. And also it, it's a big piece of the public, our, our specific district talking about equity being important to us, students feeling like they belong to being important to us and preventing the spread of a disease that disproportionately affects black and brown families, disabled families, queer families should be a priority if equity is truly important to us. We cannot foster a sense of belonging in these families if we aren't willing to do something small to keep them protected while they are in our care.
Thank you. Thank you all candidates for those excellent answers. And now it's time for the closing statements. We will begin with Mr. Lappam. Mr. Lappam, may we have your closing statement?
Great. I just want to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. It's been really wonderful to also hear from some of the other candidates. I haven't had the opportunity to hear as much from. Uh, I hope what's evident today is that I bring a passion for health equity, education, community-based participatory action and labor activism. Um, and that will bring into, um, on the board, uh, you know, policy and practice that will work towards improving the quality of education for all students in Ann Arbor Public Schools. So in addition to these experiences as a clinician, community member, educator, labor leader, researcher, single parent, child of, uh, parent of child with special needs, I bring a great deal of insight from all of these experiences. And I hope to work collaboratively with educators, families, students, nonprofits and the community at large to make Ann Arbor Public Schools great. Um, as a board member, uh, will bring, be an advocate for the implementation of high-quality research into issues facing public education and ensure the voices that Michigan's rank and file educators, parents, teachers, administrators and community members are part of any proposals, um, to help our students succeed. So again, thank you for the opportunity. Um, if you want to find out more about me, it's jeremylapham.info. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lappam. And Ms. Mohammed, may we have your closing statement?
Yeah, um, thank you again for this opportunity. Um, hopefully you do hear that, you know, I am running for Ann Arbor Public School Board because I do believe that our schools are strongest when we foster community involvement through open communication, transparency and inclusiveness. Um, with my background as a clinician, educator and researcher, I know how crucial it is to use critical thinking and analytic skills to really evaluate and address issues that are facing our education system. Um, as a child of refugee, um, whose family has struggled, I know how racism and inequities can really impact children and adults to their core. Um, throughout my career, I have been dedicated in addressing, uh, diversity, equity, inclusion, anti-racism work, opportunity gaps and curriculum assessment. I really believe I am a strong candidate because I do bring a unique perspective as a refugee, as a person of color, as a person of a marginalized religious group, as being Muslim, as a child that lived in poverty, as a scientist, an educator, as well as a healthcare worker. And I really believe my lived experiences make me a strong community leader. And I do believe that as a trustee, I will ensure all voices are heard and addressed. And I do believe that as a trustee, I will ensure all voices are heard and addressed. And you can get more information if you follow, if you search Rima for APS about my platform. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Muhammad. And now, Mr. Schumer, may we have your closing statement?
Well, obviously, being the oldest member of this panel tonight, it's pretty clear I need to go to some iPhone training. I'm using my mute button. But anyway, education is the key to unlock the door of gold, golden door of freedom. I will use my 23 years' experience working in the public schools to advance the Ann Arbor School Board and to help the students, teachers, and parents of the city. I started this conversation by saying, I want to stop confusing our children. Unfortunately, over the last 10 or 15 years, children are getting too many confusing messages. Most of them are coming from television and social media. Unfortunately, some of them are coming from our public schools. I'm going to give you two specific examples. When you look at the words used, equality and equity, equality was the word we were using 10 years ago, meaning providing equal opportunities to people, to students. Equity has replaced that word over the last several years, equity meaning assuring equal outcomes. Those are very two different meaning words. I think our children get confused about these terms. I'll give you another example. My wife's granddaughter, 14 years old, weeks before the election of 2020, called her and was trying to convince her to vote a certain way for the presidency. And at the end of this conversation, a very bright girl had a lot of the points down very well. She said to my wife, if you do not vote for candidate A, I am going to die in seven years due to climate change. I heard the depression in her voice, the anxiety voice. What a horrible message to give any child. I guarantee you, she did not get that message from her parents. She certainly could have gotten it from social media. I'm not sure if it came from the public schools, but we have to stop confusing our children. I'll, I'll end with just one more quote that there was a quote years ago saying, give me a child for four hours a day for 40 years, and I will have them thinking any way I want them to. We have to be careful and, and teach children critical thinking, not indoctrination to think a certain way.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schumer, that your time has.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And now, Ms. Wood, may we have your closing statement, please?
Thank you for having me here tonight. As I said before, I, I grew up in this town. I went to these schools for the last 25 years. I have worked with children and families in Ann Arbor. I have worked with our local nonprofits. I have sat on our local boards. I have lots of experience in our community doing the kinds of advocacy work that's needed right now on our board to ensure that families that experience marginalization in ways the same as my family and in different ways that our concerns are being both acknowledged and commitment to change. So that our, our families can feel like they belong here too.
Thank you very much.
The League thanks candidates and the volunteers who participated in this forum, as well as the community members who submitted questions. Please, others, urge others to view our forums. Most importantly, urge people and yourself to vote in the November 8th general election, either by absentee ballot or in person. Good night.
And thank you all for participating.